Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Echa Flores.
Present.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will call him. Everybody's present. Great.
Thank you, Hilda. Mayor and Commissioners, before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to everybody to stand and have a moment of silence for the two officers. Followed officers from McAllen. Thank you. Yes, sir. Before we get to public testimony, also, I think Mayor had a address you wanted to tell people.
So, a couple of things. Good afternoon. That's right, it's 12:01. A couple of things that we're going to bring up. We've had a pretty devastating time now with COVID-19 in our community. And whether we, good or bad, you have educators under your commission, you have two physicians as well. And we happen to be in the pediatric world, one's a pediatrician neonatologist and one's a pediatric surgeon. And that's relevant to what I'm about to say. Because we keep having an increasing death numbers and infections rate in the, in the community, I want people to understand the numbers. So, where's, I should have made this, where, oh, there you are. Can you come up real quick? Danny? Introduce yourself and give us some statistics before we continue.
Hey, good morning. For the record, my name is Danny Ramirez. I'm the Director of Communications and Deputy Management Coordinator for the City of Far. So, just some numbers as far as what we've been dealing with in Far and countywide. We've had a total of eight hundred and eighty-four positives in the City of Far since the beginning of the pandemic, increasingly substantially since the beginning of, at the end of June to now. Hospitalizations since June, on June thirtieth, there was two hundred and seventy-four people in the hospital. As of this morning, there's seven hundred and eighty-four people in the hospital, just with COVID. We've had over a hundred, we've had a hundred and fifty deaths in the county in the last week exponentially. I think a lot of people are seeing it. We're averaging fifteen to twenty a day, which is, that's a crazy amount. Yes, we're doing a lot of testing, but there is a lot of people that are, are not taking care of themselves, not covering their mouths. So, since the beginning of June, that percentage of number of positives has risen over eight hundred percent. So, I'm still working on the numbers for number of deaths that we've had in the City of Far. We're working with the Cameron, the Idaho County Health Department. I don't have those yet, but as soon as I get them, I can email them to you all, so you can have that information. But we continue to work with our ambulance providers. A lot of people are calling nine-one-one that don't need to go to the hospital. And we're asking them not to, because the hospital's overwhelmed. Ambulances are waiting seven hours in the ER just to offload their patients right now.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, I want to make sure people knew those numbers. So, since we're, this is still ravaging our community, it doesn't seem prudent to us to continue status quo what we're doing. So, two things we're going to do to help our population out. We already, we already do the mask. I'm taking mine off, because I want you to hear me. Everybody's got to do masks, everybody has to do social distancing, wash your hands. We all know that. But then we have what's right upon our, our feet already, is that we need to start the new school year. We need to get it started. And people know that all, all children, including my own, learn the best with face-to-face. We understand that. We, we get it. But back in March, I told you this from the beginning, we're going to do what's best for our community, irrespective of politics. And what we're seeing is just ravaging our community, so there's no way in the City of Far, geographical boundaries, there's not going to be any face-to-face schools opening. There's no contact to be made between students until we have a proven plan that follows CDC guidelines from all six school districts, which includes masks, the PPE, of course, facial coverage that they want, and the, and the barriers. We happen to protect not only our, our students, but our population as a, as a whole. Our teachers, our superintendents, of course, and all the, from the janitors, all the way up. Everybody has to be protected. And if we can't secure that, and right now, we're extremely hot spot, as everybody can tell, twenty people a day are dying. We're not in any shape or form that I see that we're ready to have that kind of openness in our community. So, for the record, we're just letting you know that that's where we're going to be signing today. We're going, I'm going to be signing a mercy order to prohibit that from happening until further notice. It may change as we go forward, but for right now, that's what we're doing. The second thing we're going to do is, we notice that there is and will be always growth in a city. But a lot of our construction that's going on, they're, unfortunately, they're not complying. Despite us telling everybody that you have to wear masks and keep your distance, it's not working out the way we wanted it to. And since our testing is not what it should be, and anywhere in the nation, we have to take a little bit harsher measures to get it under control. Number one, the construction will be halted until we are assured that we are in full compliance with our CDC guidelines. Number two, we always relied on the county to give us information on a daily basis, and they're, they're, which they are, they're giving it to us, but it's too late by the time we get it. Some of the tracing, as it's called, if you, if you, if you happen to get it, I need to know within forty-eight hours to be able to control that situation, that person, that family, and any contacts. I'm not getting it two to three, until two, three weeks later. Well, that's beyond us being able to help each other out. So, we're going to take control of that. The, the county as a whole is trying, it's under, in my opinion, I think it's just they're understaffed. They can't possibly deliver all these, I don't know what you call subpoenas or what you call them, but all these orders, the individuals, they just don't have enough manpower. So, I'm going to make sure that our city manager knows that all these control orders, as, thank you for clarification, is that the City of Far will not own them when it becomes within our geographical boundary. So, we can get there quickly. And we can educate the population that, A, you're infected, B, you got to stay home for at least two weeks, and then when you test negative, then move about. That way, you save your loved ones, you save your neighbors, and the population as a whole. And we control the spiraling cost to the economy and to our healthcare system. So, those are two things I wanted you guys to know. Did you want to clarify anything?
Yes, sir, Mayor. So, as far as you, you are totally correct. We did do a, a quick survey. We went out to the field. Even though the governor mandated mask orders for everybody, people are not following them in the city. One of our biggest populations that stretches out to every area of the city is construction. Just about every area of the city has a house, has a building, has something going up. We did do a survey, like I said, last week, and we got a bunch of pictures, and the people are not following them. So, that's going to be the primary focus of this, along with the schools, that we're going to mandate all these people to submit a work safe plan, how they're going to do it. No more sharing water coolers, they have to have sanitizer on site, make sure they wear masks and all that. It's a very extensive order, and it'll be going out later on tonight.
Wonderful. Commissioners, anyone, any one commissioner have any, I know you're in education, so.
You know, it's, in the endeavor of trying to secure the health of our, our citizens, our children, it's really difficult to ensure that face-to-face in school is that the kids are going to be wearing their masks and things like that. It, it's just really difficult to do until we get a better grip of what exactly is going on. So, as many of you do know, T E A has asked that every district submit a plan that can ensure the safety of our children. And in that, I know that a lot of the districts are looking at the kids returning, maybe partial, partial return and partial online or virtual, whatever the case may be. But those things need to be really studied. We need to make sure that if, if our kids are home, that they have the right equipment. That if they come to school, that we ensure their safety, that we have those sneeze guards, that we have all the proper equipment that our kids need in order to keep them healthy. It's the responsibility of the school to educate them and to ensure their safety. So, at this time, I think this is a, a good decision. It's a hard decision as an educator, especially, I work with children with special needs. And many of our children are behind to begin with, and then just to keep them home, it's worse. However, those with more severe needs, I think it's an injustice to, to send them to school, and then they get infected, and then what? And some don't have the immune system to, to be able to, to handle it. So, at this time, it, it's a hard decision. It really is. And, but it's for our kids, for our future, for their future, for their health.
Great. And remember, every community is different. What we do may not be logical for Austin, or Washington, or Seattle, right? But this is our community. This is Idaho County and the City of Far. And for us, ground zero, this is appropriate action we're taking today on both these fronts, on the schools and also on construction. And we may change, but at the moment, that's where we stand. So, anybody else, any commentary or questions?
Yeah, I know. I think it's really important. I mean, the community goes about itself doing what it does on a daily basis, and all of us, you know, here are healthy. But all of us probably know somebody who's been infected. You know, some of us might know some, some family who somebody has died, or, you know, or did very badly in the hospital. I get calls, you know, not too infrequently of, you know, people asking me, can I, you know, can you help me go see my, you know, my loved one in the hospital? And I can't, you know, it's just impossible nowadays. People don't understand the, the drama, not the drama, the, the heartache that's going on in the hospitals right now. You know, it's just, you know, things that are happening there, you know, you can't imagine, you know, the people being there by themselves, the stress of the doctors, the nurses. I see my colleagues from the adult side in the doctor's lounge, you know, literally exhausted. And so, it's, it's, it's a very unfortunate time for the valley. We, a lot of us didn't, perhaps did not anticipate this. But there's a lot of cofactors that maybe made this worse in the valley, you know, diabetes, asthma, obesity, all these things that, you know, have come and plagued our population. So, I mean, the very least we should be able to do is, you know, wash your hands, wear your masks, you know, and that sort of thing, and just be cautious what you're doing and not doing. Because the last thing you want to be is in the hospital right now. You know, it's just not a very good place to be. And it's, it affects everything else. It affects ambulances, like Danny said. You know, even, you know, for us, when we depend on ambulance for our patients, our pediatric that are non-COVID, you know, it affects us because we can't get them. It affects our equipment, our oxygen and ventilators that we need because they're being used in the adult services. So, there are things that, you know, trickle down to other, other patients as well. So, if you have your family members have cancer, diabetes, elderly, you know, you really need to be able to take care of them, take care of yourselves. So, that's about it.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm a contractor myself, doing construction, and even though I just want for, let people know that those in construction, if you think this is going to slow you down, let everyone know that this is for the best of, of, of your employees as well. You know, it will slow you, it will slow you down a lot more if people in your company get sick. So, it is better for us just to follow the guidelines that we're going to put out there together. And again, this is for the safe of the people that live in the community, for the people where you go and buy your stuff, for everybody, and we're hoping that other cities may follow. But again, this is not, this is not a game. We saw it in New York a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago, and, and it's happening here. So, it is to be taken serious. And if you have any questions, feel free to call the city, but it's very important that we follow the guidelines. Again, this is for, for your well-being and, and to keep everybody safe.
Thank you. All right. Sir, order signed.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll take care of it from here. Yes, sir. Item two, public testimony. Hilda, anybody sign up? Oh, ma'am. Thank you. Item number three, ordinance and a resolution, three A, consideration action, if any, on ordinance amending ordinance O two nineteen dash fifty relating to a number of authorized civil service positions within the fire and police departments. Yes, sir. This is the second and final reading. We are authorizing, increasing the authorized strength of the PD by one lieutenant and diminishing the patrol by one.
All right. Is there a motion for?
Motion to approve.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item four, four A, consideration action, if any, on, to confirm the city manager's appointment of the department head for the police department pursuant to one forty-three point zero one three one, or the Texas Local Government Code. Yes, sir. This is related to our new police chief. As the city alluded to a couple of weeks ago, we're moving in a new, a new direction. I have appointed Andrew Harvey Jr. as our new police chief. I'm asking the commission to confirm him, so he can get started working. So moved.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Andrew, come on up.
Chief?
Mayor, Commission, and Mr. Wiley, and everybody here, thank you so much for the confidence that you have in me and leading this department into the future. Buenas tardes. Me da mucha alegría y es un honor estar aquí con ustedes hoy. Y estoy bien orgulloso porque voy a ser ya el nuevo jefe de policía aquí en la ciudad de Far. Y juntos nuestro futuro es brillante. No, I'm not Beto O'Rourke. I am, yo sí soy mexicano americano. So, I'm excited to be here. I, I hate, obviously, what happened on Saturday in, in our sister city of McAllen. Two heroes lost their lives, and, and it just shows how dangerous this world can be at times. So, our hearts go out with them. Everyone here, my wife, Leticia, this is my beautiful wife, who's been with me throughout this journey, and here we are in Far, Texas. She can't believe it herself. I have some primos here. If I told everybody this, this would be packed, but I, I got a primo, I mean primo right there, Renee's, he's my, my first primo. I got David Ponce, he's like a brother to me. I haven't even seen him. He's here. She's right there. My second mom, Ms. Ponce, that's a beautiful mother right there, and there's others, I'm sure. I just want to make sure. I know there's others. But I just want to thank everybody. I, I'm, there's a connection with me and Far. And let me just tell you real quick, eighty-two years ago, my, my father, Andres Garza, was born at one thirteen West Clark, here in Far, Texas. He was born and raised there by the Garsas, who used to have a furniture store and a mattress store many, many years ago. My dad was born and raised here in Far, and he went to Far High School. And so, eighty-two years later, his son is here as the new chief of police. And for me, that's, that's something. So, I feel almost obligated to come here and, and do a great job. Nothing else for, for my dad, in honor of my dad, but, but I do it for the right reason. I look forward to working with all the Far PD. Thank you for being here. Our future is bright. I'm not a live-in-the-past guy. We, we, we are future-focused, and we'll only tolerate the present, but we're going another direction. We're going towards the future. That's the only way for all of us to go. So, again, thank you very much. I'm excited and honored and humbled. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations and welcome to you and your wife. This is a great, great community. First and foremost, you know, our experience with the police department, me as a resident and citizen here, has been excellent. I've always had the ability to look to my civic leaders, and I consider you guys civic leaders as well, as, you know, the epitome of what somebody wants to do. You put yourself on the line every day. You do what's best for your community. I personally have interacted with your police force even when I was small, and your, the police department in Far has always been led by great people. In my lifetime, I remember, I remember Chief Yescas, Luengo, of course, and they've always been above board and done a wonderful job. And my hand goes off to both of them, and they've been great leaders. And I know that now it's, it's time for us to turn the page and move on to a different structure, and also a different strategy that we're looking for in the City of Far. I know that you, you have great leaders before you, and I'm sure you're going to build on that and make things much better than they, they are now. And I just wanted people to understand that City of Far, that we're forever grateful to anybody who serves in the police department, especially the chiefs, because you put yourselves out on the line so much. A lot of stress comes with the job, a lot of political pressure that comes through the unions that we have here as well. But we know you're going to be able to bring it all together and make our, our community continue to be safe and also a better department. So, with that, you and your wife, congratulations and welcome to a great City of Far. Other than the commissioners, have any other commentary? I just want to be sure. I said that myself.
Just welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
We're here to serve you all as much, as well as you all are here to serve the community.
Thank you. All right.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Appreciate that. Five contracts and agreements, consideration action, if any, on employment contract with the chief of police. Yes, sir. As part of negotiations to get him down here, since he is from out of the area, we did offer him an employment contract. It's standard, same thing we had offered Chief Luengo when he was here, but he did not take it. Mr. Harvey's chose to take in the contract.
We got to pin?
Got to pin. Part of the security blanket. So moved.
Any discussion? Always. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Once again, congratulations, sir.
Thank you. And for the members of the community and the commission, after the meeting, we're concluded, we're going to have a quick ceremony for the chief. He's going to get sworn in, and he's going to get pinned also, put his badge on him, and also for the two judges, we're going to get him sworn in also. So, stick around, please.
Can you, can you, wait just one second, please, if you don't mind, for sure. If you don't mind, can we call up the judges? I just want the public to know who they are.
Sure.
Come up and say hi. They're going to be appointed.
Yes, sir.
One by one.
Come on up, Judge.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Thank you, everyone, for being here this afternoon, for your time. I really appreciate it. I wanted to personally thank you, the mayor, the commissioners, the city management, for giving me the opportunity to serve our City of Far. Rest assured that the court will do its best to serve justice for all. Our legal system is based on that principle, and that is that we're going to have an independent affair and an impartial judiciary that will interpret the law that governs us. And I thank you for that. I would also like to take the time right now and thank Judge Rudy Martinez and all of my court staff for the warm welcome. They are behind me, they are supporting me, and I want to share with you that we share the same core values, which is something that I'm very proud of our city, and that's the pride. We want to make sure that whoever goes into our court receives professionalism, respect, integrity, discipline, and ethics. And I'm here to work. I'm here to serve. I'm glad the chief is on board. And you're welcome to one of the best cities, if not the best, City of Far, and we're here to serve our community. We want the, the public to know that they can count on the judicial system here. Thank you, and God bless each one of you and our family, and we're looking forward to start working hard for our city.
Good.
And if I may, Mayor, Mayor of Nantes, Commissioners, Mr. Wiley, and everyone here, I thank you for the confidence that you've placed in me throughout the years. And I had heard good things about Judge Claudius, and, and it was all true. And we're, we're going to be there for her, as, as we know that she's going to be here for us and for the whole city. And we thank you for the confidence that you've placed in us, and we thank the citizens as well.
Yes, well, well, both of you, welcome once again, Judge. Obviously, you've been here as, I call it the, you've been the superior judge, right? I know you've been the chief justice, judge, is what I call you guys, and now it's, you know, it's changed hands. No, 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 no. Experienced, sir, experienced. No, no. But I want to thank you for staying with us, obviously. Mrs. Confloris, obviously, you know that before you, there was another young lady such as yourself, who absolutely was a, a rock star, superstar for the City of Far. And here at the City of Far, we take great pride in having diversity, but we also want to have our own, the City of Far residents. We love having our own. And so, it gives us a really great pride to have you here and taking the helm. And I'm sure you're also going to build on what Marisa Caranza has done before, and what the judge also has done, and get us to the, the next level with our judicial system, make sure all our residents get treated fairly. Obviously, we're, we're not in the, in the business of, as I would tell the chief, we're not in the business of giving people tickets. That's not our, our goal. Not to make their lives miserable, it's to make it better. Educate them first. That's, that's our number one goal. So, welcome to both of you once again. Thank you for accepting.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm so used to Judge. I wanted to take the time, too, because as a matter of fact, Judge Noé González, which is one of our district judges, is taking the time to be here and doing the swearing-in. And I want to thank him because he's an example of the judges that's always there to try to help everybody in the legal community grow in their professional goals. Also, a prime example will be our district attorney, Ricardo Rodríguez.
Absolutely.
So, thanks to those two that are here to swear us in.
All right, great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, guys?
Well, I'm not going to, you all get mad at me because I told you.
Wait, a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned. Twelve twenty-three. Thank you, guys.
Let's go ahead and do the chief first. Chief, go up there. Judge, DA, please. And we can all stand him.
Commissioner, Mr. Harvey, congratulations, Steve. I was a little thrown off by the last name, like the Rigneys and the Singletaries, but great people, great friends, and I welcome you to not only the City of Far, but also to Idaho County. I've had the honor and privilege of working with some fine law enforcement officers, not only the City of Far, but throughout the whole county and also the road grant area. You've taken a big loss the last two years. We've lost some excellent, brave individuals in the line of duty. And I welcome you, and if there's anything that this attorney has always to give, I would like to continue working with you and every fine law enforcement officer in the City of Far. I want to thank Chief Luengo also, and Yescas that I've had to figure it out and working with as well, and we're looking forward to working with you. And congratulations to you and your family as well. Okay? If you want to raise your hand, and repeat that to me, I in your name.
I Andy Harvey.
You swore and you swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties?
Execute the duties.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of chief of police?
Of chief of police.
For the City of Far?
For the City of Far.
County of Idaho?
County of Idaho.
And state of Texas?
And state of Texas.
And will?
And will.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Preserve?
Preserve.
Protect?
Protect.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution?
Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the United States?
And of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state. Mayor, thank you.
That's right, Rick. Hold on, Rick. I'm going to get a picture. I'm going to get a picture.
You're not going to pin him first? Yeah, let him.
Oh, they got to do that?
Yeah. Go ahead, ma'am. Get a picture, get your badge on. It's like that, right there. Just forgetting that to me earlier, bro. Don't poke him now. It only hurts if there's blood.
There you go. Please, for days.
All right, ready, guys? Ready, one, two, three. I'm going to take another one. Ready, one, two, three. There you go, guys. Thank you.
Judge Flores, you ready? Same process, but you don't get a badge.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you. Chris, I've known you since you were a lawyer. Working for, well, I know him as Judge Rodriguez, but he's already been the district attorney. I'm surrounded by history here. Chief of Police, appointed that I'll, now I don't know if one of my favorite doctors remembers me, but.
Delivered him?
I delivered him.
No, no, no. It's kind of funny because Frank and Vickers and I were partners when Doctor Calleto first decided to be our, at, at that time, I think, our only neonatologist that was actually kicking up that practice down here, which we were in great need of. I feel for you right now, for both of you, because I know how hard it is with COVID-19 to actually deal with the everyday medical and emergencies that come up in your practices. But what I wanted to say to you, Chris, is this, when we talk about history, it, it's cyclical. It happens over and over. And I can tell you that I asked you for your age, not because I wanted to embarrass you, but because I wanted to put things in perspective. You see, Chris is only thirty-eight years old. And thirty-eight or so years ago, Rudy and I met in law school. And Rudy and I have a history that goes that far back. We were struggling, as is everybody that goes to law school, anybody that says they don't struggle in law school are lying to you. But then you come out and you do what you think you need to do as a lawyer, and you've done a fine job. You have gone through so many experiences, personal and professional, and that is why you're here. You've been selected because they saw something in you that they believe was going to enhance the experiences of those people that are living in City of Far and are affected by the courts here in the city. So, I applaud you for everything that you've done to get their attention. And now, let's concentrate on keeping their attention on what it is that you need to do as a judge. I will remind you that I've, and I've shared this with you before, when you were one of my prosecutors. Wisdom is often defined by many people, and they come up. Wisdom is often defined by many people and they come up with all these strange things of describing wisdom. Wisdom has nothing to do with age. It has nothing to do with just experiences. It actually has to do with knowledge that we gain from experiences, but then it has to do with you being able to filter that knowledge through your heart. That's what true wisdom is. And when you analyze what it is that you're doing here for the citizens, you need to understand that. Take what you learned, what you have in your brain, filter it through your experiences, which make up your heart, and you're gonna be just fine. I've known you long enough to know that without even reminding you of that. But sometimes, this morning, we were laughing about it. I was talking to a friend of mine who's always sending me these biblical sayings. And so I don't know if you're saying them for a reason. Uh, hopefully it's for the right reasons, or it's just to remind us that even the choir needs to be prayed for. So at this time, I'm gonna ask you, Chris, to please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye?
Aye. Criselda y Juan Brincon Flores.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
City of Far Municipal Judge.
City of Far Municipal Judge.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this great state of Texas.
And of this great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Judges, yeah. In a minute, we're gonna take a picture of all you guys. So don't leave. Okay.
Rudy, now that you know how old you are.
Hold on, hold the judge's, the Bible.
Rudy and I go back to when we were very young. And Rudy still looks a lot younger than I do, which he always has. I'm hiding my ring. But I never would've thought, Rudy, that we would've seen what's going on today. Um, I, I walked in and I see so many familiar faces, faces that I would normally go straight up to and, and kiss them on the cheek and hug them and, and, and do what we do as people every day, especially in our community and in our culture. And I was looking around and I said, for the first time, I felt uncomfortable being in a room of voters. And it made no sense to me. But if we follow what science tells us, it should start to make sense to us. We need to change the way we see and do things every day now. At this time, Rudy, I wanna congratulate you once again.
Thank you, sir.
As I always have. You're a man of honor, you're a man of integrity, and I know that to be true because I've known you that long. I know you as Rudy. The judge, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand up. Repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Far Municipal Alternate Judge.
Far Municipal Alternate Judge.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the, the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this great state of Texas.
And of this great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. You got them? You got two? You got hers?
Yeah, she has hers. Go, guys.
Pass it up to the center. Judges, judges, pass it. Yep. President Martinez, we'll go with that.
You gotta come up here. She's one of your own.
Just bounce out?
A little bit, shift a little bit towards you.
Just a beat. Everybody slides a little bit.
Right there, yeah. All right, guys. Ready, guys? Ready, one, two, three. Far, one, two, three. There you go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.